Okay, thank you. So I would like to call to order this meeting of the Berkeley Joint Powers Financing Authority for Tuesday, April 14, 2020. We have a call.
Okay, agency member Kessarwani.
Here.
Davla?
Present.
Bartwick is absent. Harrison is absent. Agency member Hahn?
Present.
Wangrath?
Present.
Robinson?
Here.
Droste?
Here.
And Chairperson Ari.
Present. The court is present. So I'd like to read the advisory on the first page of the agenda for this meeting of the Joint Powers Financing Authority pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020. This meeting of the Berkeley Joint Powers Financing Authority will be conducted exclusively through teleconference and conference. And I'm sorry, whoever not muted their long queue line. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and the shelter in place order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, there will not be a physical meeting location available. The published agenda did note that this meeting is being broadcast on KPFB Radio 89.3 as well as live stream from our city website and being broadcast on BTV Channel 33. The published agenda also did include a link for members of the public to log in, to participate in the meeting and offer public comment as well as to observe and listen, as well as provided a number. And any member of the public who is phoning in who wishes to comment, please press star nine on your phone. If you are using the Zoom platform, please request to speak using the raised hand icon rolling over the bottom of your screen. Members of the public were advised that they can submit comments either before the meeting or during the meeting, which will be read aloud during public comment at the email clerk@cityatberkeley.info with the subject line, public comment, item number, and the number. And these public comments that are submitted during the meeting will be read aloud by our city clerk within the time limits that are prescribed by the rules of procedure. So with that, I will now go to public comment on consent items only. We have two items. The first item being the approval of the minutes of the February 25, 2020, authority meeting. And item two, amending the declaration of easements between 2009 Addison Street and 2015 Addison Street. Is there any public comment regarding the consent calendar for the Joint Powers Financing Authority? I see we have some hands that were raised. If you do not wish to speak to the consent calendar for the Joint Powers Financing Authority, please unraise your hand. And I will, and then when we get to the regular meeting, please raise your hand again if you wish to speak when we get to the appropriate agenda item. So I see no hands raised. So with that, I will go to the council. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar or open up for comments or questions. Who wishes to be recognized? Vice Mayor Hahn?
Thank you. I move the recommendation.
You moved the consent calendar.
Exactly.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the consent calendar for the Joint Powers Financing Authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Robinson. Any further discussion on the motion? I see no raised hands. See no raised hand.
Agency member Kessarwani? Davla?
Yes.
Bartwick is absent. Harrison?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Wangrath?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Droste?
Yes.
And Chairperson Ari.
Yes.
Okay. Consent calendar approved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Wangrath. That's called the law of terms.
Okay, to the juror, agency member Kessarwani?
Yes.
Davla?
Yes.
Bartwick is absent. Harrison?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Wangrath?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Droste?
Yes.
And Mary Ari.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Before we do that, Mr. Clark, I know that we have members of the public that wish to offer comment on non-agenda matters. Even though this is the first time that we are conducting this meeting, we're locally using the Zoom platform. Normally, we ask speakers to submit cards in advance. Have we randomly selected cards? How will we select speakers for non-agenda comment?
Well, I believe that the only method that's available to us right now is for those folks who wish to speak on non-agenda public comment to raise their hand and then the first 10 would be selected.
So members of the public, if you wish to offer non-agenda public comment, please raise your hand and we will select the first 10 in order of the raised hands.
And then there's 10.
That's 10. So we cannot accept any other speakers at this time. Thank you. I think that has Councilmember Barker join us yet? So, okay, why don't we put the link? The mirror light is still correct?
Yes, we are still live and broadcasting.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council for Tuesday, April 14, 2020. Can we have a vote called?
Okay, council member Kessarwani.
Here.
Dabla.
Present.
Councilmember Bartlett is absent. Councilwoman Harrison.
Here.
Han.
Present.
Wangrath.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Droste.
Here.
And Mayor Aron.
Present. And Mr. Louisville, I just think that the person who has been in Berkeley that's been did not have the lead and so therefore was not able to call in. So it's happened in clerk's office and sent him the leak. So even if you are the panelists, I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, I'll resend it. Thank you.
Thank you. So colleagues and members of the public, thank you for joining us this evening. It's the first time that we've conducted a regular city council meeting using the Zoom platform. And we will do our best to facilitate this meeting, to enable discussion of the public and council on the very important business we have in our community. And we know that this meeting is being conducted at a very critical time, not only in our city, but also in our world. The COVID-19 pandemic has claimed the lives of, as of today, 125,000 people, all alive, 25,000 people in the United States. We know one individual in the city of Berkeley at this time. And we are working every single day. And I want to just take this opportunity to thank our city manager and our city staff who are working tirelessly to respond to this public health emergency and make sure that you are a good state, to support our small businesses, to support our arts organizations, for residential tenants in our residents during this very difficult time. So I'd like to now read the public advisory that was published on the agenda that was published in this meeting to summarize the legal authority to conduct this meeting remotely as well as the procedure for public participation. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, the April 14, 2020 meeting of the Berkeley City Councils will be conducted exclusively through teleconference and Zoom video conference. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and the shelter in place order issued by our public health officer and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, there will not be a physical meeting location available. Live audio is available on KPFB Radio 89.3. Live caption broadcast of Council meetings are available on cable channel BTV Channel 33 and also available on the city's website. To access this, we're remotely members of the public were provided a link that they can access to call in, to offer public comment, as well as to observe the proceedings of this council. If you do not wish for your name to appear on the screen, then use the drop down menu and click on the rename icon to rename yourself to be at office. To request to speak if you are on the Zoom platform, please use the raised hand icon by rolling over the bottom of the screen.
If you are joining by phone and a number was provided for members of the public to join by phone, if you wish to comment on any portion of the agenda, please press star nine and wait to be recognized by the chair. So if you wish to speak and you're phoning in, please press star nine. Members of the public were also provided a link to submit written comments, and we did receive numerous written comments, which were provided in the supplemental packets. Comments can also be submitted during the meeting by emailing clerk@cityofberkeley.info. And in the subject line, please note public comment and the item number you are addressing. We ask that members of the public please keep to a 150-word limit. These comments will be read by the city clerk, if so received, during the meeting, subject to the time limits that are prescribed by the city council. Please be mindful that this teleconference is being recorded as a city council meeting, and the rules of procedure and decorum will apply to council meetings conducted by teleconference and video conference. So that summarizes our procedures for tonight. Once again, thank you for participating. If you are participating on the Zoom platform, please use the raise hand button to indicate if you'd like to speak to an item when we call public comment on that item. And if you are phoning in, please press star nine to indicate if you'd like to speak when we call public comment on that item. So before we go to ceremonial matters, colleagues, I sent to the city clerk who distributed this afternoon a proposal that I would like to offer for, to govern our proceedings this evening. I have submitted to the city council a number of temporary rules changes. And I do want to share the screen right now to see if I can just present this. And colleagues, this is the document that the city clerk had provided. So as this is our first meeting since the spring recess and as this is during the declared state of emergency, I am proposing several temporary rules to govern tonight's city council meeting. As this meeting is being conducted remotely via video conference and teleconference, our experience having conducted these meetings for the Agenda Rules Committee is that this adds significant time in the management of the meeting. And so to ensure that everyone can participate and to also keep the meeting at a reasonable length, I am proposing these rules for consideration tonight. These rules are to ensure the orderly, efficient, and timely management of our agenda so that the business can be transparently and effectively transacted without undue burden on members of the public, city staff, or council members. As noted in the document, the rules of procedure do allow the mayor to decide issues of order of the council meeting, subject to the conformance of a majority of the city council. And in addition, the Roberts Rules of Order, which under our rules of procedure do also govern the proceedings of the city council, that the council may suspend rules upon two-thirds vote of the city council. So I'd like to make a motion that the city council adopt these temporary, that the city council suspend or amend various rules in the rules of procedure and order and adopt the following temporary rules and procedures for tonight's meeting. Now let me read the proposal and then I will entertain a second. So we are proposing to limit council speaking time as follows. At the outset of the meeting, each council member, so after we take action on this particular motion, each councilor will have one minute to offer words of support, encouragement, or appreciation to the public or city staff, particularly given our work around this pandemic. For the consent calendar, the mayor and council members will have up to five minutes. And after all members of the council have spoken and/or passed, if they so elect, and after public comment, members will have an additional two minutes to discuss the consent calendar. For action items, the mayor and council members will have two minutes to make initial comments on an agenda item, except for the author of an agenda item, who will have five minutes to initially present that item. After every council member has spoken or declined, and after public comment, council members will have another five minutes total to address an item. And debate may be extended for an additional round of comments by a majority vote of the city council, which is consistent with the practice that we have employed during city council meetings. The time for each councilor will be told or stopped as staff answers questions posed by council members and the mayor. And council members were urged to ask their questions prior to the meeting. And I want to thank the city manager for receiving questions and providing detailed responses to the city council this afternoon. I am proposing that we modify the procedure for pulling items for the consent calendar. At the present time, a single member can pull an item to the action calendar. I am proposing for tonight that three members must agree to pull an item from the consent calendar for it to move to action. And absent three members pulling that item, the item will stay on the consent calendar, and the mayor or council members will be allowed to record their aye or nay or abstain votes on individual items or the entire consent calendar. And with respect to public speaking time, given the challenges of facilitating a meeting on the Zoom platform and the additional time that it takes to do so, I am proposing that we limit the amount of time that members of the public can speak on an agenda item to two minutes. The rules of procedure say that members of the public have two minutes to speak and additional two minutes can be yielded if two other individuals or one or two other individuals yield their minute. Given that we're using the Zoom platform, we are unable to determine who is yielding time. The technology does not allow attendees to yield time. So I am proposing that we give people two minutes for every agenda item. That is the maximum amount of time. They can only speak to an agenda item once. This is generally consistent with the practice that we have, which allows two minutes for agenda items. So this is a motion that is not debatable. And so I am making this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wangrath. Okay, we will now go to a vote. Mr. Clerk, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kessarwani. Dabla. Bartlett. Harrison. Han. Wangrath. Robinson. Droste. And Mayor Aron.
This adopted, I would like to give council one minute to offer many words to the public, to staff, or to the community, particularly given that we are in a state of emergency. So I will go by district number. I will now recognize Councilmember Kessarwani. And Mr. Clerk, if you can, please set the clock for one minute.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As I adjust my video.